Okay, we'll call this work session. Do you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is our first work session on our new schedule. It's Tuesday, but it's three o'clock rather than one o'clock. We're gonna have every fourth meeting at three o'clock followed by a six P M. Town board meeting. So we'll get started with our agenda for today. First thing on the agenda is we're gonna finalize the building permit fee, uh, building department fees. We've gone over this a few times. We've had the building, the chief building inspector come in and speak with us. We've had discussions on it. Again, this goes back to the whole concept of user fees rather than general tax pay base paying for things that can be more specifically charged. So I know we reviewed it a couple of times. Any que- any questions on it? Till we finalize it?
No, I don't. I don't have any.
I don't have any. I think that there, I think the the fact that they are user fees, that they've been updated, that they hadn't been updated in several years, and that these projects are becoming more complicated, involving more demands of our building department, more hours, more manpower, more paperwork. They have to pay for themselves, you know, so I think it's, you know, I think it's in line with, you know, what we should be doing.
AMRA specific?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, so-
You know, a nice job.
So we'll do a resolution at the work-
At the resolution.
Okay. An accessory apartment?
Not questioning-
No. That's a, that's a code policy issue.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you to Reed, Karen, and company for doing this.
A lot of work.
A lot of work went into this, involved a lot of, uh, a lot of time to put this together.
Okay.
And I think it's, uh, I think you've taken a fair road, uh, a middle-of-the-road kind of approach, which is what we were looking for. You weren't looking to be harsh.
No, we're not looking to make money, we're looking to cover expenses.
Correct, yeah.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, next on the list is a corporate assessors and building department. As most of you know, or maybe you don't know, is when Craig Wood resigned, we decided to, uh, reevaluate the assessor's office and we're looking to make it a, an appointed position rather than an elected position. And we're one of forty towns in New York State that still have elected assessors. So with that said, we're gonna be very busy next year with, uh, with our full-time assessor and our two current assessors, uh, moving forward. And one of the concerns is, uh, they need a car. So what we've done is, uh, what I've done is last year we budgeted for, uh, two electric cars, one for the TCOs and one for the building department. We got those, the building department is fine, the, uh, police, uh, vehicle has had a lot of problems. We don't know if it's because of usage or if it's just not a good car, but we've had a loaner all summer. So we're trying to decide, you know, if, if that's gonna be the way to go or if we're jumping too soon onto the electric car bandwagon. So what I'd like to propose this year, it's a little early, but I'll do it anyway, is, uh, last year we budgeted sixteen thousand eight hundred sixty-five in both the building department and the zoning department for a new electric car. That's with the grants that we get for it. Uh, I'm gonna propose we put that in again because, uh, if the, by, by then, we have one for this year, so they'll have two by the end of the year, then I'll get a third, it can be a joint, uh, building zoning office and, uh, assessors office. Also, we'll have, you know, again, we made a commitment to try to go green. Uh, we're doing that. We're also addressing the needs of, you know, the town, but we just have to see that the green works before we, uh, go on.
Yeah, just for better understanding, we mentioned that we bought two co- you know, we got two cars last year, one from the police department, one for the building department. Building department's worked out fairly well.
Very well.
The police department one has been proven to be somewhat of a limit. So it's down.
It's not right.
Uh, how do we utilize that car, you know, in term, is that just used in the summer, high months?
No, the way, the way that one's used, Jim, is, is high months it's used, the TCOs use it full-time.
Okay.
Gets a lot of mileage. The rest of the year, the police use it, any off-island, uh, things they have to go to, uh, any meetings they have to go to, any training they have to go to. So they make use of it.
Okay.
Uh, the other, if, you know, we're still waiting to find out what the problem is. If it has to do with the way they're using it and it's not suitable that for an electric car.
Yeah.
Then we'll take that one and give it here, and the money that we allocated for a new one will put towards a police vehicle for next time.
Okay.
So, so I just need to know that everybody's on board that we're gonna
Yeah, that makes sense.
Keep running the, uh,
Yeah.
the fleet. Because what we've been doing is, and, and, you know, we have a little humor here that, you know, so-and-so got a car and so-and-so didn't. But we're getting third-hand-me-down cars when we do that. And there comes a point when the highway department says, "These aren't worth fixing anymore." You know, "You're kidding, we can't get them inspected, we can't get them," you know? So I think, you know, we, we, we make the most of it, we get as much as we possibly can out of our vehicles, but I think it's time to start looking at, uh, you know, addressing the needs and the safety of the staff. Yeah, so that was really it on that one. BJ, anything else you want to say about the assessors?
No, do we only have a charger over there?
No, we, well, we have that charger, but we have the, you know, it comes with a plug and a setup.
Yeah.
We charge this one here every night. Yeah.
Speaking of the charger though, um, we had, there had been, um, questions at one point about where, um, where that bill was going for the electric.
Yeah.
That was part of the original grant, but that's, we're getting to the end of the three-year period.
And you'll see, I, I started the budget and I have a, a sheet of just questions, and that's one of them. That, yes, we're gonna stop paying for that, and we have a line for it, and we put five thousand in every year, we never used it. So we're gonna have to try to figure out how much we need to put in that line.
Yes, and then also how to then charge people for using it.
Hmm.
Which is what-
That was the plan when we put the one alongside North of police headquarters for the public, that, that eventually we would be able to put, you'd be able to incent your charge and charge.
Yeah, and it's set up for that. It's set up for that now, but we, you know, we didn't have to pay for it.
Right, right.
But, but that's one of my highlights on the, as I said yesterday.
So is that Brian Sherman will be, would check out that? This idea of putting a charge of something on that charger so we can charge people?
I think we'll figure out what it costs and, you know-
Yeah, no, I mean, we do have to investigate to figure out how to make it operational.
Right, that's-
For billing.
That's-
Or, you know-
Saying who we assign.
I think you're right, it should be by works. Yeah.
Okay. All right, then the next one on the agenda was, uh, New York State W Q I, uh, grant application for Fresh Pond. Uh, do you wanna speak to that?
Joe's on.
Oh, Joe's on, I'm sorry, yes. Joe?
Hi, sorry, we've got a couple of meetings going on up here at once, so I apologize if there's any, uh, background, uh, background noise going on, but just as an update to our Fresh Pond, uh, situation, we've uh, had to table the resolution that was proposed today to the town board to apply for, uh, New York State, uh, D E C grant because of eligibility concerns. Uh, one eligibility requirement for this particular project category, which is unique to others, is that uh, the project had to have already been permitted by the state regulators. In case for us is that this project has not been permitted, it was not part of our original scope of work, therefore, we're not eligible for, uh, this grant, uh, application. So our plan now is to table, table this grant application, uh, to look at advancing the po- project through other means over the next twelve months, uh, and better positioning ourselves with permits and final designs, uh, for the twenty twenty-three fiscal, uh, grant cycle.
Okay, so we're just gonna hold on that and, uh, move forward with what we've been doing.
That's right, we do have the final engineering report in hand now, uh, and that lays out, uh, a roadmap for next steps of the project. And, uh, it'll be up to us internally to figure, uh, how we're going to align with the various financial, uh, incentives through, through grants or W Q I funds and ultimately a partnership with, uh, the Fresh Pond Neighbors Association.
Okay, all right. Okay, uh, believe it or not, that's it for the agenda today. Uh, we're gonna go around the table, I'm gonna start, uh, I'd like to address, uh, what's been going on in the newspaper with the full-page ads and all these, uh, new groups that are forming. You know, it used to be there was the Shelter Island Association. And then in the early nineties, there was a group formed called the Concerned Citizens Committee. And they had, that was a, the time when tax pack was very big on law enforcement, and school boards were having trouble getting budgets passed. And they came and, uh, you know, made their case and went to the town board and worked with us to get things done. Now, uh, for whatever reason, I guess the Shelter Island Association isn't, uh, enough of an umbrella for all the different, uh, committees. We have Friends of Shelter Island for Water and Zoning. We have, uh, uh,
Friends of-
Friends of Cockles Harbor for Water and Zoning. We have, uh, uh, this group that started, that we've been working with actually, uh, regarding, uh, Shelter Island Water. Uh, the group from the Nature Conservancy and the Group for the East End who've actually come in to work with us. So that's kinda nice. Uh, my biggest problem with these new groups is number one, that they don't come in and address us as a town board, they do everything through ads in the paper. And two, and more importantly, their ads in the paper are really anything but accurate. They're throwing a lot of things out there that are, you know, are not true and have the potential to be very damaging. So that's all I'm gonna say. Go around the table, Jim?
Yeah, I, I prepared a remark. This is based on the article last, and that July twenty-first, uh, Bob Kahn is the treasurer, facts of Shelter Island. Uh, I'm gonna read it. Respectfully, I am not looking to battle Mr. Kahn, but I can no longer sit back and not respond to his messaging. I am also not going to debate all of his comments. Some of his comments are open for discussion and could lead to constructive dialogue. But many of his comments demonstrate his lack of understanding of Shelter Island. Those who have grown up, been educated, work and raise their families here on the island. Many of their children want to remain here as well. That is a fact. Some of them have been successful in obtaining property and building a starter house. Many of them with some help from their families. I am not too sure, but I don't think that Mr. Kahn fully appreciates the value of a diverse community and helping younger couples and seniors have the opportunity to live in a community that they deeply love. Lack of community housing that is affordable for those, uh, for these people is a glaring problem that our local government wants to address. Rather than immediately taking the position that you have taken, namely, and I quote you, "If you can't afford to live here, you need to look elsewhere up island." Why not try to give the community housing an opportunity to succeed? Be a part of the solution and help create a plan that is reasonable and environmentally friendly. Yes, that is our message to you and to others that have taken the position that this cannot work here on Shelter Island. Finally, please don't tell the community that right now, and I quote from the article, "Right now, we have enough volunteers who live on the island to discharge the municipal responsibilities." In reference to our fire and EMS departments, Bob, we have a very senior group of volunteers in both of these departments, and we can't wait until we can no longer provide these services. The town board recognized this when Phil Powers stepped down from the EMS. This was a highly educated, skilled EMS volunteer who served our community for decades. Respectfully, I ask you, when was the last time you attended a musical, science fair, graduation cross-country meet at Goat Hill, Friday night basketball game, holiday concert, book fair, or any other school function? The benefits of having a small school in your community, in my estimation, is immeasurable. Yes, I did volunteer ten years of my life to help coach and rebuild the boys' basketball program. I've served as chairman for the Athletic Hall of Fame induction ceremonies. My, my, my wife has been on the Board of Education for several years, now serves as its president. Our experiences at the Shelter Island School have been extremely positive and rewarding. Our smaller school now includes pre-K program, and that learning can be tailored to meet the needs of students. The faculty under the leadership of Dr. Dolger has been recognized as one of the top schools by the USA Today for their region's results, A P results, and college placements. These same students also serve our seniors, our American Legion, the Ed Foundation, the Ten K Run, and numerous other community functions. Again, I repeat, why be so critical of the community housing plan? This plan has not yet been developed, and your energy could be better served by voicing your concerns in a more constructive manner. Thank you for listening. Thank you. And that's, that's basically my comment, that, again, be a part of the solution. That's what Shelter Island is all about. It's about volunteerism. It's about looking at the glass being half-full. It's about making the most of changing situations. And, um, and yes, Bob, I am an ex-teacher of thirty-five years. I am prejudiced towards, towards a local school, but I see the value of it. And I see the value of having a diverse community. And if I didn't, I wouldn't live here. I wanna be part of something that's makes, what makes Shelter Island special is its people. And that includes all different kinds of people. And that's what I embrace. If I wanted to live in a gated community, I would have moved to Florida with my wife and lived in a gated community. I don't believe in it. I, I know that I grow as a person by being surrounded by younger people, people of different ethic and religious backgrounds. It's just, there's a lot to, to be offered there. So I don't wanna, again, you've accused me of being oftentimes preachy, and maybe I do come across that way, and I'm sorry if you're, you're interpreting that way. But I have invested, and I've been here, this is start of my sixteenth year. I have put fifteen hard years at the tail end of my life in trying to make this place a better place to live, so that people growing up here will have, will- Uh, the things that you're putting in the paper, they may have some merit, they, but be constructive, be part of a solution. Be part of a group that works together and to help develop a plan that will work here for the benefit of all of us. That's all I have to say on that. In my other comments, uh, I did attend a PEP workshop, and what I will do is, because there are so many, um, federal, state, county, and local grants, and I, and there are like ten pages of them. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna make the board all of the aware of them, Stephen aware of that, make sure that Jennifer has a copy and Joe has a copy, uh, and the town clerk office has a copy as well. We will do everything within our power at the next grant committee to screen these carefully and try to go through them and see where we can maximize our grant opportunity efforts.
Well, Jim, just an example of kind of, you know, what type of grants?
Um, mostly water grants, mostly environmental-
Saltwater?
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and freshwater stuff, but it really, as I look through them, um, there's a lot, and, and when you get it, maybe we can put it on the agenda, discuss them in a, a future board meeting. But you really need to see them up close and personal. There's a lot of mon- financial monies out there. Um, and, and the reason this was on the PEP is because I happen to be the chairman of the East End of, 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 you know, the Conic Estuary Partnership, and, uh, which Jerry was nice enough to volunteer me for, but, uh, one of the first things I wanted to really do, uh, on this was, everybody keeps repeating this, this is the opportunity, this is a lifetime, you know, this only comes around, you know, once every thirty, forty, fifty years where there's mu- monies available for these kinds of programs. And I don't think that we had a good grasp. I think if we went around as the five East End towns, people are learning from other towns where they can apply some of these grant monies too, so I'm excited about that. I also, from last week, um, we had a couple of neighbors that lived on West Neck complaining, uh, not complaining, but voicing concern.
Pointing out.
Pointing out, good word, pointing out that we're getting some flooding. I want to say, and I wanna praise the highway department and Brian and the technical get, the guys out there this week. Uh, they were all cleaned out, they were worked on, so I, hopefully, you know, that will help solve the problem. And that's the kind of constructive, uh, criticism that, you know, that when people point these kind of things out that we need to jump on, so, you know, I'm very happy about that. That's basically all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. BJ?
Um, yeah, I, too, um, um, I don't wanna, uh, pylon here at Mr. Kahn, but, um, um, last, oh, that was a bad, um, there's just a couple of things here. It just hurts my heart that you think that we're such evil people and that we wanna build things like that you have in your ad. Um, multi-story, multi-unit apartment complexes. I don't know where that comes from. Nobody has ever talked about that. We live here, we love it here. We have property here, or we don't, but hmm, hmm, that's not really part of the discussion. It really hasn't been, and I don't think it's going to be unless the community rises up in this plan, housing plan, and says, "We want multi-story, multi-unit apartment complexes," but even then, we kind of know the island can't really support that. Um, and then the other sort of, just a little picky-un thing, the referendum raises far too much money, and there won't be a neighborhood on this fragile, fragile island not threatened. Well, there is the smart growth principles, which we are sort of bound by, which negates that. There's also the idea that if this had been in effect over the last few years, it's about four fifty a year. Just that's evening out a, an, an erratic curve. Um, so four fifty a year, and what do we have left? Less than thirty years? So four fifty maybe buys one unit? So we have twenty-eight units? Is that bad math? Um, so, you know, I just think some rational and reasonable criticisms would be great. A lot of these are just not-
Thank you.
Sit.
Amber?
Um, yeah, I didn't have any meetings this past week. Um, I wanted to take some time, I went through all five pages of state advertisements as well, and I have like lots of notes, but I did not get an opportunity getting ready for this meeting to go through it. Um, but I think that there is some bad information in some of these things that I really think, um, I'd like to sit down and address next week, like point by point. Um, you know, one of them is the, you know, the C P F advisory board has accumulated about a hundred and sixty acres of land with development rights and development rights for an additional two hundred acres of land. The development rights that have been purchased, they've already been extinguished. So if you're, if we're gonna do the math, we need to do the math correctly. That's why we've got consultants, and, um, there was a criticism, we need to get world-class consultants, but I kind of thought the consultants we hired were professionals and know what their, their business, um, and they know the stem, so, um, we do have plans being developed. We want people to come in and give us feedback. Um, so, like, let's, like, come in and let's talk about it. Like, there are some good points in here, there are some points that are just off-base, so this is what we're supposed to be doing right now, creating this plan with public input. So let's do this in a fashion that we're working together instead of against each other, because this is the plan that we want to be a community plan, so, um, but I'll, I'll go through it with, you know, more thoughtfulness, um, by next week.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm, and Amber, so that I did not have time to go over it. Um, but we did have a comprehensive plan workshop mea- meeting last night. Um, we talked about the public workshops the week before, incorporated some of the suggested changes to the chapters. Um, I've uploaded those for the committee to look at, and then once the committee looks at them, then we'll post them back on the website for additional comment. Um, other than that, that's kind of where I'm at.
Okay, I think, I think the biggest concern from the town board, really from my point of view, is not that there's, uh, people opposed to things, it's that they don't tell the truth. They put, they put things out there, Bob snickering, I mean, I, I have highlighted things. Yeah, this is about me. Where's the plan, Mr. Supervisor? What are the, these possible changes, you ask? How about a huge new sewer plant, you know, so that's the matter? I don't know where that came from.
And sewer.
Or a significant increase in allowed noise in bars and homes and hotels. Yes, that's true, uh, the, some of the, some of the bars, not, I didn't say you wrote it.
And we just, you'll have enough-
Some of, some of the bars and hotels asked us that we could talk about the noise ordinance, we said, "Yes, after the season, we'll discuss it." So I don't know where the huge increase of allowed noise is coming from. Or possibly the creation of hundreds of apartments and condos under the guise of community housing on land which is currently undeveloped, co-ops in sands? I don't know what people think our motive is here. I mean, we, we all took this position for the betterment of Shelter Island, to do what the people need, wanted done, to do what we feel, you know, we can address that need, things that need to be done. Uh, if there's an ulterior motive, again, I say this quite often, you know, "I'm missing the boat, I don't know what it is." And if you guys are getting money under the table, I want my chair, you know, so, I mean, I really don't understand it. I, I think, uh, constructive criticism is good, I think dialogue is good, but when you put five pages of falsehoods in the paper, that's not good. And that's all I'm gonna say on it. Gordon, did you wanna speak? Uh, yeah, are you just on your attendance? Okay.
No, he-
Bob?
For executive session.
Okay, no, I, I know. Okay, Bob, did you wanna, uh, address this? Three minutes, Bob.
Yeah, that's, that's part of my point. It suggests that we don't need to have full-page, two-page, four-pages of ads. But we need to do that because we're not getting the opportunity to express anything to you in logical manner. Remember, when you fired me from the community counting board, I had an opportunity to respond. You fired me for two reasons. One, I didn't agree with you. And number two, it was a retaliation for me pointing out that you violated the town coverage, but normally, Mr. Me-
You lied to us to get on that board, Bob. Let's make it clear, you lied to us. You were pro-housing. You can have twenty seconds more, don't worry. You lied to us, that's why we got you off the board.
The example I just made, we don't have an opportunity to speak in these meetings, even uninterrupted for thousands of minutes.
Okay, let me stand.
Oh, no.
Go, please. And will-
Every time you do this to me, it makes me upset, as any resident of this town should be upset with that kind of behavior, bullying behavior by a supervisor who doesn't even follow a law in this town, accusing people like me on the front page of the reporter being a liar. Okay? We're not lying. Those, everything, everything, you're doing it again in a public, yeah, but, and then, and then, even, I came here not to respond to you, I came here to suggest to you that, that these resolutions that you have, that you're gonna be having at a meeting today, we're not providing to the public twenty-four hours advance notice. It's not on the town website, none of these public hearings that you're having are available to the public. So how are you gonna have hearings when people are gonna practically respond? Mr. Attorney knows that the governor of this state amended the state's open meeting law to require twenty-four-hour notice, so you're not even providing that, and the other thing is-
No, 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 that's not totally true, it's, war is practical.
No, no, it's changed.
No, 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 take, take, take a look at the language.
No, she changed the law, mister, and here it says-
Mr., what does that mean?
It says at least-
Sir.
Twenty-four hours prior to the meeting during which the records will be discussed, the prior edition, that one that you are the teacher of, right? It used to say upon request therefore to be executed, practical is determined by the agency. She got rid of that language. You don't tell me, I don't know the freaking law, all right?
Are you not turning?
Just a minute, you know, I don't-
You're not, you're not acting like one, you don't have, you don't have good-
Dude, 'cause I'm dealing with a guy like this, we got three minutes.
You started yelling at me for no reason. You called me mister. I, I, let's go, let's go, timeout, let's go, let's go.
This is what this guy does for a living, so that's why nobody can here can express anything. We have to spend thousands of dollars, and it's just not my group. You've got two other groups that are forming this island to oppose what you're doing.
Look at the members, they're pretty much the same people.
I don't think so. I don't even know the members.
No, nobody does, 'cause it's not public.
Wow, fucking I tell you, that's your problem, not mine. Finally-
Sir, we had, just can I just address your point about, uh, the agenda and the resolutions? No, 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 you made a statement, I'm gonna care.
You might have finished it when he's-
Town clerk finished it. There's a, a sickness going around the town clerk's office, so we're trying to do the best we can.
Okay, that's not good enough. We need to postpone all of these hearings until the public has enough-
No, 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 the hearings have properly been noticed.
No, but you haven't properly provided us-
They have, so, no, 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 they have. Could we let him just fetish, please?
My best friend.
I don't even know what he's talking about.
So, okay, finally, and I'm, BJ, I'm sorry, she's not here, but everything that you guys say you're not gonna do. For example, BJ has said in an open meeting she's not gonna be building, uh, and you have Ms. Hanley, and, and she just said it, you can stop that.
Uh, this isn't my phone.
Cancel it, I apologize.
Okay, so let me say calmly-
Three minutes, Tom.
That would be great. I appreciate it, please. Okay, I don't know where BJ is, but we're recording everything that you're saying in public hearings, and when you say that you're not gonna build multi-unit apartment complexes, when you say that you're not gonna do this, you're not gonna do that, that you're not- When you say that you're not going to do this, you're not going to do that, that you're not, that you're not going to strip development rights for community housing, what Eche said the other day. We are going to make note of every single one of those. And we're going to demand that you put every one of those statements in the comprehensive plan, okay? And so therefore you can't go changing your mind willy-nilly in the future on all this and go back. We don't trust.
One minute, Bob.
Thank you. So finally, so that's one thing we're going to make sure of. And if you say that you're not going to put in the comprehensive plan, and you made a statement that you would never do something, that proves that you are a liar.
Okay, I, I, I also thought before Stephen, before you go, first of all, no one makes demands what goes into comprehensive plan. The community at large decides what goes into comprehensive plan and what doesn't. The community at large.
We have a right to petition our government. That's what I mean. Every, so every.
Just said you demand, or you demand, doesn't mean it's going to happen.
Of course it is. That's not my decision to make, okay? But we are going to demand that you do that.
Do you want to address, you know, the, uh, agenda and what was advertised and what was. Put out before public hearings were all set three weeks ago.
Yeah, no, no, yes, uh, all the public hearings are duly noticed, that and properly noticed. The two, the two that were having today. Um, about the three, I, I'm talking about, oh, yeah.
Brownie English and Nelson White State.
So those have all been properly known. So I'm not sure what.
Well, it does say that you have to, the new version of the open meetings law says that you have to give twenty-four hour notice. On any records available to the public pursuant to Article Six, as well as any proposed resolution, law, rule, regulation, policy. Or any amendment there too.
That's what we do when we set a public hearing.
I, were these resolutions available at that time?
You have to read.
Are they unpractical? You're not reading.
No, no, that's the old law.
I don't know, I just printed it out.
That's the old law. Did you get it off the website?
Sir, do you know LexisNexis as an attorney?
Yes.
Yes, I. I printed it out.
And that's the old version. You have to go to the new version.
No, it's been updated.
No, it has been updated on April twenty-second. Well, is yours a April twenty-second? Does yours say, then you're looking at May twenty?
We're going to end this debate now.
That's May twenty is after April twenty-second.
Well, that was last year. So April twelve, twenty twenty-two is when it was updated. So you got to get the new version. It no longer has the language you're quoting.
I'll say hi. But, but it should, because for situations, for situations like this, for situations like this.
You're the state leader, which I really agree.
All right, is it, is there something you're concerned about that we can help you with? What, what, what in particular can we provide to you?
You have promised, this board has promised greater transparency.
Absolutely.
You've not provided.
And we've adhered to that.
Is it on the website right now? All, all these resolutions for this?
Yes, yes.
When, as a, as a. Because I checked it, but just before I got over here, that's why I'm.
No, but it's on there.
Wasn't?
Well, check it.
Oh, you're saying I took a.
Look at it now.
I took a picture of it.
Pull it up, pull it up.
I took a picture of it and it wasn't there. You'll have to show me.
No, you got it right there, pull it up.
Okay, I took the photograph. All right.
I'll take a look because I.
It's got to be twenty-four hours. It wasn't there.
Bob, can I just say something, please, in here, trying to be very calm and gentle and.
You always are, Jim.
I don't say that. You know, you know, that's not the case, but I am today. And you know what changed that, Bob? Going out to that retreat last week and dealing with, with a dozen of the finest young men. Young men, they're all in their forties and fifties. Served this country and did some things, and forced to do some things that were very difficult and live with that each and every day of their lives. And, um, you know, I actually came back and I, it was kind of like a little religious experience for me to really be honest with you. So when I get to this job and I start to see kind of stuff that we're involved with here and the yelling, screaming back and forth and, and all the accusations. It, it, it tears my heart because.
I did.
Bob, Bob, can we, can you just listen? I'm trying to be sincere here. I wish only you would redirect. And by the way, I love that there's a series of checks and balances. I love the fact that there are people that are watching. I love the fact that people are taking notes. However, as I said in my opening remarks, I would love really. The fact that since the plan is in the developing stage, rather than be dismissive of the plan before it's even developed. Be part of the solution to the plan. Help and guide the plan to the right place. I don't have the magical formula. I don't claim to be, uh, you know, capable of, of. We have people on this town board that are doing their very, very best. And the other last thing I would say is. Now, you, as you know, in seventeen months, I'm stepping down and, 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 and. Not any bad feelings or good feelings or people forcing me out or I can't take the heat or. It's just time to move on. You know, it is time for to get younger and we have some younger people. My major concern with these kinds of things in the newspaper and everything else is that. In a year from now, people are going to be making decisions, less than a year from now, actually, about nine months from now. People are going to be making decisions, well, I know Jim Colligan's seat is up and maybe some other seats are up and whether we should run for office. I just think that the most common thing that I hear when I creep out on the street is, Jim. How the hell do you put up with this stuff? I say, you know, to be honest with you. It, it doesn't, um, I'd be lying to say it doesn't bother me at all, but I try to keep it in perspective. And I would only wish that everybody would take a, a little look at what we're trying to do here. Just calm down just a little bit, be constructive, have oversight, uh, hold, hold us accountable. Um, but let's work together. That's all, that's, that's all I'm asking for.
I think, I think I'm here with that tone. If I come here and Jerry Siller starts talking. No, I, I have, I, I have tried it a lot of times. I even tried it when I was a member of the community housing, when I was really quite on that time. Matter of fact, I was in favor of the two projects that you were doing, because I was under the assumption it was for EMS. And for medical, uh, for volunteer buyer people. That was the assumption. I got to that meeting, Michael Devon said, otherwise, I started here, Mr. Siller. It's about things you talked about, building a community, having economic diversity on an island. You can't ask people on a fixed income who can hardly pay their property taxes, when they rent out their houses. You can't ask them to use their money to support people making a hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars a year, giving them subsidies to own houses.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Thank you. And, and just, I, I will respond. That's one of your fallacies. Why are we asking these people to contribute? It's not coming from the taxes. It's not coming from the tax base.
Community housing on town property, who's paying property taxes on it? Not the renters, not the owners, because you're the owner.
But the owner of the property. We're the owner of the property.
That's right.
Not, not the building.
So nobody pays property taxes. Yeah, everyone else who does pay property taxes need to support people who live on.
And that thought, then we probably should stop buying land to reserve because we're losing tax revenues.
No.
Let me just also say, if I may, um, if you can't afford to live here, move.
I didn't say that. I don't know where that rumor came.
Yeah, you did say that.
I thought you said that, you know.
I heard.
You see that in the paper all the time, but it's not what.
We'll pull out the infamous housing meeting and see if you said it.
Taxes, maybe it needs move.
Can't live wherever you can't afford to live.
True. So if you can't afford the property taxes, maybe you need to go.
You want, you want to think, Bob, then don't raise property taxes and don't start doing things that.
You don't plan on raising property taxes. Okay, you're right. All right, I'll be a hundred, let's be transparent.
Yes.
The only way we'll raise property taxes, and I will propose it to this board when the budget comes due. Because we're going to have to double what we put in for EMT offices last year, and we're going to start a fund.
You want to give higher workers. You want to give a few EMT officers some need to have a subsidy for housing.
No, no, we're not going to give them subsidy for housing. We're going to pay professionals to be here because people can't afford to live here.
The scope, the scope of the.
Forty million dollars are going to be raised by this referendum in twenty years.
You're dreaming.
Property values.
Twenty million dollars hasn't been raised on community preservation.
Bob.
Exceeded the three minutes. The scope, the scope of, of housing, by the way, in my eyes, and I think in our eyes, is not, it is important. EMS and, and, and fire service, very, very important, but it far exceeds that, Bob. It's, and, 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 and you don't want it to, or you think that that's the only prop, the only two categories. We, we, that are worthy and we think differently.
Yeah, but it's your money, not the taxpayer's money. That's what I'm saying.
And we have no intention to use that.
Yes, you are.
All right, if your plan goes through, we will use the taxpayers' money.
On Long Island again.
If you're.
It's towns, because of the community housing that they do.
Actually, okay, we're, we're thankful that they haven't been brought against us because we haven't done community housing. We haven't done community housing. That's why they're being sued.
No, that's not.
Yes, it is.
No, no, I'll, I'll send you what I'm talking about.
Okay, okay, okay. And one, one last thing, I just want to correct you, Bob. Um, again, as far as, uh, the agenda and the items being twenty-four hours. Um, I went to LexisNexis, which you would agree is reputable and usually up to date. No, would you agree with that? That this is usually reputable? LexisNexis? Okay, okay. So I went to this, uh, the state website, which you're referring to. Four twenty-two, twenty-two, the language is still there, sir. To the extent, I'm reading it right here. So you were wrong and you were wrong, sir. So have a, have a good day.
You can have, you can have this discussion afterwards. Thank you, Bob.
Have a good, have a good day, sir. Have a good day, sir.
Section, I was reading from section.
Do you want to move?
Yeah, I think, I think you guys can continue to find your own.
Town board would like to know, it's section one oh three.
Yes.
And we got what, E?
No, it's now.
One oh three, E is what I'm reading on the, the one you referenced, the twenty-second. I'm, I'm not sure what you're reading, sir. Have a good day.
All right, we're done. Thank you.
I believe Julia had a question.
One oh three.
Have a good day, sir.
It says one oh three, Ian, you.
Have a good day, sir.
You have an.
I don't know what you read, sir. And, and, and just like, I'm still waiting for your legal memorandum on where you could call witnesses. Uh, during hearings. You said you were going to provide a legal memorandum. I'm waiting with bated breath. I'm waiting with bated breath. Antiquity state in the law. Go back, go back and get your, uh, CLE or something, because you have to refresh.
Reading to the state.
It's enough. Both of you, enough.
Thank you.
You say Julia, you had a question?
Yeah, Julia did.
Yeah. I don't know if she still does, but. Or Julie.
Hey, Julia?
It's more an observation than a question. I hope that having given people who are paying to have their opinions about community housing. Debated by the town board, that the town board will make sure that the people who don't have money to pay to have their opinions advertised in the reporter. Also find a voice in this whole conversation. Nice point.
Well said, well said.
Thanks, Julia.
Pam?
Hey folks, I, I, I have a completely different topic, actually. I'm, I'm curious, uh, months ago, the, um, shoreline access.
Pam, I'm sorry, just, just, I just wanted to respond to Julie, Julia, that, that we do have, we are having public meetings, Julia. And trying to get that word out, that, that if people come to the meetings about community housing. Um, that's where they can be heard, but they also can be heard online by filling out the, the questionnaire, um, the survey, the questionnaire. That express, that ask questions that directly, um, will directly help inform the plan that is eventually developed. So I just kind of want to get that out there as long as, uh, I have two reporters in the room.
And if they're uncomfortable using the internet, they can always write down their questions and comments and concerns and bring them into us at town hall. And that's acceptable as well.
Okay, I just have one follow-up before Pam talks on another topic. Yep. Don't call paid advertisements articles. They're not. They're paid advertisements and they should only be referred to in that way. It's confusing for people to see information published in the newspaper, even though it's listed as a paid advertisement. Please don't double down on that. And I would also say, my understanding of what everybody in town and government and county government in the legislatures across this country do. Is thinking out loud in public. That's what this is all about. This is all about people having to sit in public. And express themselves out loud with an audience. Bob Cohen understands that when it comes to a contract, it's only what's reduced to writing that matters. It isn't all of the nonsense that went into coming to the agreement. It's the agreement that's the only thing that's substantive. And my understanding is all of this conversation about all the things that you're working on. The rubber doesn't hit the road until you've actually created the plan. And so this idea that somehow people are sitting on the sidelines, taking notes and recording conversations. And they're going to hold you to everything that you say is absolutely absurd. Um, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Pam?
Yeah, hi, thanks. Um, I just have a question about the shoreline access task force list. We had had a meeting and the list was put together. I had mentioned that Middle Har Bay Road was not on it. You were going to look into it. And I don't see that it's published underneath their committee yet. It's not on the website for me to see a final publishing on that list.
I, I really don't know where we stand with them, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I.
Well, I'll follow Pam, I'll follow through with that and, and I'll issue a response back by next week, okay?
Yeah, because I think that what, they, they put that list together about a month ago. And then I'm also curious about some other documents. Because Joe Fandora mentioned that Lombardo was going to have an, an engineering report for the sixteen-man wearing site. And now he just said he's got one for Fresh Pond. I, I don't know if Joe's still on, but I'm wondering, could he put those up on the website as well for us to view?
Yes, I am, I'm still here, Pam. Yeah, they'll, they'll be up shortly. We're, uh, looking to slot those into a work session agenda item within the next week or two. And, uh, and I think you'll see more, uh, direction on that in the coming days.
Okay, that's great, because it'll take me more than twenty-four hours to review it, I'm sure.
Yep, certainly.
Appreciate that.
Yep.
Um, but I do agree that the twenty-four hour, well, I realize that that's as, as it's possible. But, you know, this, this, this agenda for today, and even for tonight, you had ample time to put this agenda together. Because you didn't have that meeting, uh, a, a week ago, Friday or whatever. And you, I, I'm, I'm surprised that it showed up so late today. With, with an adjustment to the agenda for the twenty-fifth. I mean, I looked at it and it showed up on, it showed up at noon time that, that you were going to talk about. Fresh Pond and there were no documents and now there really wasn't much discussion. And now I seem to be confused about what's happening in the meeting at six thirty. So I'm going to check the agenda again and I'll, and I'll see you then. But yes, Mr. Colligan, if you could get back to me about the, about the, uh, the town landing there on that one, that'll be great.
And Pam, Pam, it was a staffing issue that caused the delay. Um, nothing nefarious.
Yeah, okay. No, that's fine. I understand that. Believe me, I, I, I know how busy things are over there and I know your situation with illnesses. I know you're doing the best you can. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add that the, uh, short term, I mean, um. The shoreline access task form, uh, task force has its final recommendation posted online on their own page. They were posted under our, um, upcoming hearing and meetings, uh, but, uh, only during our active agenda item. Now they're on their website.
Okay, but the correction hasn't been made from Middle Har Bay Road. That's not on the list. And I know it's a town landing. We all know it's a town landing and it's not on the list. It was, it was told, you know. We could go back to the whole conversation about it, that, um, honestly, Bo Paine was told not to discuss it. And we sort of know why because of the dock that was built on that property. So I'm just saying it's a town landing and it should be on the list.
Yeah, well, Pam, I, I promise you I will take care of that.
Yeah, that's all I'm looking for. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
I don't see anybody.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion. We go into executive session to discuss a potential acquisition. Land acquisition.
Yes.
Hold on one favor. All right, and again, we have a meeting at six o'clock tonight, town board meeting.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice day.